All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting. The board is six thirty. If folks could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
President.
Ms. Grant here, Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Mathias.
President.
Ms. Shaq.
Here.
Ms. Williams is excused, Dr. Baker.
Here.
And President Ross.
Here.
And may I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And that moves us on celebration, we have none this evening. And do we have any public comment for board agenda items? Does not look like it. And, um, okay. So we'll move forward with the secretary's report.
All right. I just have a few, um, meeting updates. So ad hoc facilities committee will meet Wednesday, July twentieth at four P. M. here in the board chambers. The policy committee will also meet Wednesday, the twentieth, at five P. M. Also, um, no, that will be in room one oh one. Finance committee meets Monday, July twenty fifth, at four thirty P. M. in the board chambers.
Right. Thank you very much. We'll move forward with our committee chair updates. Um, Ms. Shaq, the finance committee?
Thank you. Our June finance meeting was fairly light, as is customary, the end of June. Really, the meeting was focused on readying our district for our upcoming academic year. So we received our annual blanket order purchases, which were approved at the, um, board retreats last week. And then, uh, this evening, you will see the purchasing order agenda, also with, uh, items to prepare us for our academic year. And that's my report.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, move on with the superintendent's report.
So, um, good evening, everyone, and we are excited to talk about a couple of things. The launch of our district website, as you know, launched July one. Um, we will have a full presentation next week. When we scheduled the initial presentation, we forgot, I forgot that, um, the communications team was actually at a conference in Chicago, um, learning all about public relations and other things. So they'll be at our next board meeting for a presentation on the website. But I certainly invite everyone to check out the website. It is awesome. It is very inviting and engaging, and it's very intuitive to how people typically, um, look for information. So we're excited about that update and, um, excited to bring you a little bit more detail related to that. Um, also, we are actively getting ready for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And, uh, we have a couple of things that are taking place this year that are, we're kind of diving into our strategic plan. One of the things that we have continually said is to make sure that our strategic plan is, um, an actionable document where you're able to see the work around student outcomes and our facilities and the things that we are stating around equity. And so I'm gonna invite, uh, Mr. Mel Atkins and Natasha Neal up to come talk about the mental health initiatives that we'll see, um, as far as activities and things specifically related to, um, needs of our school staff, as well as our scholars for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and beyond.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, and President Ross, um, Dr. Roby, members of the board. Um, again, my name is Mel Atkins, Executive Director of Community Student Affairs. And Natasha Neal, which is Director of Community Student Affairs as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
So today, what we're going to do is give a brief overview of social emotional learning, what's happening, um, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the mental health initiatives as well. And so just a quick reminder what S E L is. Um, it's really talking around adults, um, and scholars. Um, it's both really to point out, and it really was developing healthy identities, managing emotions, achieving, um, personal or collective goals. Um, you kind of see feeling show empathy. And there's really five competencies that are related, um, that we've heard about in the past. I almost spent a lot of time on it, but there's, you know, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And this is really, we're really talking around really adults and scholars in the classroom. We're talking around in the community, um, families, you know, all those structures around those areas as well. And so we know we, um, we want to tie everything that we do into our strategic plan. And so it's important to point out that what we're, it ties into all, um, six themes. Well, we're really focusing on theme one, which is meeting holistic scholar needs. And you see around increasing scholar engagement, empowering families. And so we'll be combined, if you think around, that the original document, it was like one A and one C, um, around, around those objectives. And so, um, having a framework is one, of S E L framework, and then, um, empowering scholars, you know, for voice and giving them resources of what to do around S E L and supports are really what we're trying to do. And then everything that we do is either around one of these four initiatives, around building foundation support, um, strengthening adult S E L competencies. Because we know, um, if we, if we don't strengthen it around adults, it really doesn't matter. Um, if, if we don't change as adults, it doesn't matter with our scholars. And promote S E L for scholars and then reflect on data for continuous improvement are really the four areas of our plan. What we did, this is a brief, um, summary of what we did, is we took a panorama S E L survey, a student survey back in the spring, around March. And this is giving you just, um, a nugget of kind of what our, um, staff see. And so what it's showing you is on the left, um, grades three through five is showing you, um, some favorable, um, scores around, like sense of belonging and positive feelings. What you, when you go to the right on grade six through cha, six through twelve, you see it changes. Um, the sense of belonging was at seventy percent, seventy percent of our kids sits, um, in, in grades three through five, they said, they said, how much support do the adults at your school give you? Um, according to our scholars, they, they said a lot of support in grades three through five. But at six, twelve, you see it dip down into twenty-nine percent. And so what we're doing is trying to use the data, um, from our scholars to determine what happens in professional development, um, upcoming school year. So when looking at our plan, so we have data points such as those. What I want to show you, a little bit bigger, is our professional learning plan. So the first thing is, um, look at the table, the table of contents, there's really twelve, um, outlined professional development opportunities that we have identified, um, for this next school year. You see it ranges from kind of what is S E L, um, adult strategies, integrated it into the curriculum. Um, restorative practices, circles, you know, tiers of support, S E L and equity. It's a really overview, trauma-informed teaching. And so, um, you see the different, um, options. And just, um, you know, for a later time, we tried to unpack what some of those P Ds can look like. We did, uh, two of them so far, um, just for, for days, for days purposes, which you click on, these are hyperlinks. What is S E L, the Castle Framework, um, what goes into each of the professional development opportunities? And also, we have that for kind of the next one, importance of adult strategies. But we also, we know, um, through those initiatives, that central office is key. So what we did is we took a, um, a need, a self, a needs assessment back, I'm gonna say last summer, uh, last summer with, and it was our needs assessment trying to get, um, Castle, which is the collaborative for academic, social, emotional learning, to help come support our, our learnings. And so we identified that we haven't given, um, central office, um, the tools and resources needed, um, to help everyone else. And so that what it means is, it may, it means some very different hiring practices. It means when we look at, in, in the business office around budgets, what does it mean around whole child and, and social emotional learning? It means, you know, every, kind of every role in every department. We gotta teach the adult competencies what they mean, um, before we even go to the scholars. And so that's one thing that we're targeting here. So we got the twelve, but then we're, we have a three-tier support around central office. And so we're gonna have the ones that are deeply involved, um, in this, in this training. They're gonna get like a, a full day training of, of central office expertise, that's ongoing. And then we got moderately involved for central office, and then just someone just kind of need-to-know basis. So, so this is gonna be our first, um, triage, really trying to make this systemic. And so that, that's a, that's a huge piece right there. We know also what everyone's gonna get is building level coaching. And so we, we began to, um, train, um, district supports to be able to do this. Happens, you know, because it just can't happen at this level, it happens, happened at the, at the ground level, and so we have that there. We began to outline, and because you can get lost when you begin to look at different resources out there around social emotional learning. If you Google that, you will find hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of things, and, and you say, what, what do I really do? And so our team, what we did, and it's gonna be, um, an ongoing document, doc, um, resources, is we began to take some of the best of the best that's out there and, and outline resources for, around categories, um, for our staffs. And then as we, you know, as we get, uh, more training and more supports, we will add more information. But we've kind of, um, collected the best of the best that we thought so far. And we've have, um, we did this with Castle support as well. Going back. What also we're gonna do is, we know this is a very important year. We have a lot of generous reports around professional development. We saw, showed you the central office expertise, talked about that, the building level coaching and resources. But we're gonna go really deep with these, um, we're, we're piloting in eight schools. And so, you know, we're in the final stages of, of finalizing who those schools are. But we're still planning on offering professional development, attentive professional development in August, um, with, with the eight schools. And really, what they're gonna be doing is, is a few things. Is one, they're going to, um, identify and adopt, um, an S E L curriculum. I know we've been waiting on this for a while. And so they're gonna be the, they're, and so we don't want to pick it from a central office perspective. We want the buildings to have voice in what this looks like. And so that's one of the first things that we're gonna do. They're gonna learn a little bit about S E L, but pick the curriculum. And we're trying to launch around October, um, the actual implementation of the curriculum. It's pretty aggressive what we want, we want, we think is very important. Um, because we know, um, by next year at this time, we want to have training already, um, in place for full implementation. And so in order to do that, we have to get started pretty quickly, um, around that. And we're taking, um, what we want to do is take the willing right now. We know everyone's gonna be on board the following year. We want to make sure people, um, opt, opt into this because it is going to be, um, community to practice, um, meetings after school, trying the curriculum, embedded it into our curriculum, you know, with their, with our curriculum team. So it's gonna be a lot of things that's gonna be informing our work with that. And we also know, um, through this framework, we gotta, we have to work on, uh, with, with families and caregivers. And so as we go on down this road, we know we're gonna have, you know, the classes, the workshops, and Natasha's gonna talk a little bit in a minute around supports that are happening, gonna, at the, at the community level around the supports as well, because we're gonna need community support to do this as well.
So, real quick, uh, on the curriculum piece, um, uh, I guess the menu of curriculum options, is that, uh, in that resources link you clicked before? Or what is the, um, you know, the palette?
Yep, yep, so what we try to do, um, with the resources is, one, because we know the, some schools are piloting an evidence-based curriculum, but other schools are gonna need support still of what to do in the meantime. We can't, we can't wait any longer to say, what can you do? So there's lessons in there, there's some supports in there, there's on those resources. But what I was specifically, uh, what I was talking about with the S E L curriculum is, one, it's evidence-based, and we're trying to tie it into what our data says. So our data talked around, you know, especially at the, as you get older, around the sense of belonging, for example, kids need supports, need supports on. And so we've, we've, we've already, um, kind of done some research on S E L curriculums. And so we, we've, we've narrowed it down to, um, three at this point. And then we want to, um, take that and, and let the, let the school teams pick from there of, of what, what they want to do. I know we're trying one this summer, um, in summer school, uh, second steps, as we were trying in, in summer school. So they, they, we're, they are doing that. Uh, we're also looking at caring school, community, and ruler, um, are, are the three that we, that we've been, we've been looking at so far, aligned to our work.
Got you.
Mr. Higgins, do you have some sort of criteria when you select those eight schools?
Yep. The biggest thing we want to do is, um, we're looking at leadership, is we want to make sure that, um, that it can, that this becomes a priority in the sense that we know it's already tied to a strategic plan. But leading the efforts in the sense that, um, giving supports on the ground level of what it can look like in the classroom, um, supporting, you know, with the coaching, you know, when, when we have coaching, making sure that, you know, that there's space and time available for that to happen. With, um, the meetings after school, because we don't want to really pull them during the school day, we, that, you know, there's, there's time and space for that to happen. And so we're hoping, and, and we would ideally want to do more schools, but it's just to do it correctly in the capacity that we have right now, we, you know, we think we can start with eight and be fairly comfortable with that.
And those eight, you're gonna look at the established building, uh, leadership to, to pick out those eight so that?
Yep, yep, so if we have more, uh, you know, we may have, you know, more than eight that are interested in this. And so we have worked collaboratively with the team to figure out, you know, what's the best way to, you know, pick the eight.
If I can also add, um, each school, if you recall, we, as we're rolling out our strategic plan, we have given schools kind of like what's tight and loose, and we've allowed schools to look at their own data and to say, what are one or two priorities that they want from our strategic plan? Because we don't want to say, you do this, you do this, and to allow schools to look at their data. Earlier this spring, or the summer in June, we brought all of our, um, district leaders with their instructional teams together for them to have an opportunity to kind of look at their school data, to pick one or two goals around the strategic plan. Because we figured if it's drilled into kind of what their data is saying, then the level of accountability and buy-in will be higher because they're able to kind of pick what that looks like for their sites.
Can you go back to the, um, data piece that showed this, that one there? So just a couple of questions that come up from this. So how connected do you feel to the adults at your school? And, um, how confident that you will, okay, so let's just look at that one, how connected to adults at the school. So twenty-nine percent of the survey responses from six to twelve. So since that's an average, presumably there are schools that are much lower than twenty-nine percent.
Your range. Yep, so this is a, what I'm showing you is the district report, a sample of the district report, and each school has a copy of their own. And so what comes with this panorama data is, is the neat thing is, because you look at data all the time, and sometimes you just get the habit of looking at data, but what do you do with it? And so they have what they call as a playbook. And so the playbook is, is not the, and it's really showing you kind of the best practices based off your data, what, what should you do? Now, everything you see in the playbook may not be relevant, but we're hoping there are a few things for, um, teachers to begin to think about it this way, or, or staffs and teams to begin to think about it this way.
So, so with that, I just wanna, that if there are schools that have less than twenty-nine percent, then I would consider those schools to be in a bit of crisis. And regardless of whether or not they're, um, of the eight, right? Uh, so it just seems like if, I mean, that's, that's a pretty startling statistic for kids. Um, so, and, and related to that, and, and actually, this is kind of a, is, are there enough adults in the school to do the work? Um, because the professional development assumes that we're gonna take the people that are already there and help them to understand this new curriculum that's gonna help them to do better. But maybe the issue is, is that there's not enough adults in the building to help them to feel a sense of belonging.
What schools are asking, which is, um, and we want to take advantage of this, is I believe Dr. Roby talked around, it was June twenty-first and June twenty-second, we had a, um, teachers, um, teacher leaders come with their, um, principals and building leaders to the J R Pierce University. And we looked, and they were, they were kind of going through the revised school improvement process. But in there, what was, what was self-articulated, literally probably ninety-five percent of the, of, of the buildings were asking for S E L supports. And, and so, um, the, 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 the willing and the want, I think is gonna be extremely high. We do have enough room in for, um, coaching support, you know, for if, if we, if we can't, say, do thirty buildings, you know, we, we still have room to do other supports. But we have the data, the same data that, um, for each building what we're looking at today. And you're right, we gotta listen, we gotta listen to what the, what our scholars are saying. And so it's, it's a lot of data points that we have, but if you're hearing it from them, they're saying, I don't feel this way. We have to do something about it, and we, and we know to do something immediately.
Yeah, I guess my question is wondering if the curriculum alone is enough? Is, if we need to figure out a way to, okay.
No, and so, and so all of this is layered, so there will be curriculum, because we do believe in having a tiered supportive and, or tiered structure of, of support. And then in addition to that, there's, um, professional development. And what you'll hear a little bit later as, um, Mr. Harmson presents about professional learning, we are really trying to drill into professional learning where there's, it's basically three categories. Compliance kind of categories, and I'll use that to kind of like Title IX, um, bloodborne pathogens, the stuff that you have to do annually for a matter of law. Um, curricular kind of, um, professional learning where there's opportunities around new curricular instructional pieces. And then also the professional learning component where people who are specifically interested in a particular topic, where it might be, um, socio-emotional learning, it might be equity, and we're trying to make sure that people have opportunities for both. And so in addition to the, the schools that are piloting this first year, there will be other opportunities for other staff who are interested in it. So kind of those early adopters, so to speak, where they're able to go through professional learning trainings, um, after school, before school, lunch and learns, um, through kind of different platforms on our website and other things. So we're trying to really provide the stuff that we have to provide by kind of compliance and law stuff, but then also treating our staff members as the professionals that they are, that allow them to say, I really want to learn more about X topic, and they're able to drill into those particular things. And then as we kind of continue to grow in this, um, where we're making this system wide beyond this school year, then the next set of eight schools or ten schools will be able to kind of adopt this particular program or programs related.
Can I add too, um, Dr. Baker, to answer your question? The curriculum is not an intervention. So S E L is not an intervention for students who struggle. It's a everything, we need to change the way that we do things. And so part of this is building a climate and culture that's positive in buildings and in classrooms, so you can layer on skill building on top of that. Um, because just like math or reading curriculum, this is skill building, and we have to give students a chance to try, fail, and, and reteach and remodel. And so in order to have a place where students feel like they can do that, the climate and culture has to be in place. So it's really a holistic approach to, to all of that. So belongingness is part of the curriculum, but really it's in building that climate and culture in the buildings.
Don't you think too that these terrible scores as far as sense of belonging and so on, that's also a result of the pandemic and the way many of these kids didn't have a chance to really make those kinds of connections with the staff that they might have had if they weren't on the computer or on Zoom?
You can pull back the layers on, because, I mean, any one thing, it, you can talk about the timing of the year, because it was also in the spring. And typically, um, the cycle of schools, as you get closer to the end of the school year, people are traditionally a little bit more weary and tired. And so it could be timing of, of the school year, it could be pandemic, it could be what may be going on in a particular school site at that time, too. So this was done in the spring then, is it, yes, in March?
Yep, in March. And our plan for the, this following school year is to do it twice. So one in the fall and then one in the spring, so we have two sets with that.
I have a couple of questions. Was this survey, and then I think you called it the playbook, that the, were those, uh, resources provided by Castle?
No, and so we learned actually around, um, the funny part, we learned around the panorama student survey way back when we first were introduced to Castle in twen, two thousand sixteen through a Wallace, Wallace Foundation grant. And so we were asking around, what are some evidence-based surveys? And, and they introduced us to panorama. And so every, so we've kind of had some off and on relationships with panorama. But this was the, the, um, the, the first time we had almost all schools participate in this implementation. We've had, we've had pilot schools do it, but this was pretty, almost district-wide, we had, um, adoption of, of the survey this time with that. And then, uh, the, the playbook is this, it, it just gives you ideas of saying, okay, my data, what do I do now? And it just gives you, here are the three moves that you can do right away, or what, you know, what you can do. Then we can follow it on top of the coaching and the support that goes with that as well.
Yeah, so like Mel mentioned, each building has access to their panorama survey, uh, data, but classroom teachers and support staff can actually drill down per student. So I could look up Leila and see if she has positive feelings about herself, so, um, and then I could go to the playbook and say, what are some things that I can do to increase that? Um, and so the, part of the reason we love, we love panorama so much is, is one, because it's very specific, and it comes with a playbook. And the playbook is made up of all evidence-based, um, programming. They take some from second step. So all of the, the curricula that we are looking at, they take in exercises from those curricula. Um, they have teacher ratings, all of them have been tried by teachers who are actually in the classroom. So you might have an exercise that gets three apples out of five, and teachers have made comments of whether or not this works, it doesn't work, um, is it easy to implement, is it not? So, uh, we love having the playbook at our fingertips, and even those schools that won't be implementing a specific curriculum have access to evidence-based programs.
And then my second question was, do we know, um, for these pilot schools, do we know who will be teaching the curriculum? Will it be the classroom teacher, will it be a counselor?
Teacher. And so we know this has to be, um, you gotta do a both and, in, in a sense that there may be some times in the beginning that there is a S E L time, but you have to embed it into the curriculum. And so it, because if you think about the competencies that we looked at earlier, um, it's, it's, you can't set it to the side. You, you really have to put it in math, U L A, science, social studies, arts, music, everything that you can think of, you have to, you have to infuse it.
I know you, you're focused in on S E L in this, and the presentation focuses in on this, but the data is, is quite revealing. Um, and you talked about the, uh, the layered, um, academic approach also, and the, and the, the, um, development of interventions in a plan. In a timeline, where do you see that piece fitting in? And I ask the both of you, because, uh, efficacy, to me, self-efficacy, um, not only is belonging, it's not only motivated by belonging, but it's motivated by one's competencies and one being, uh, associated with, with a curriculum and with classroom engagement and with success. And my, my self-efficacy raises my belonging when in fact I'm a part of and I'm successful at it. Um, and, and that to me is, is, is an alarming stat that, that I think that we, we ought to have a timeline and figure, and I'm sure that you do as professionals.
So part of the professional development plan is, uh, what we, what Mel showed was that you have a classroom management section where staff have resources on building a positive classroom and a positive classroom environment. Um, and then restorative practices. To us, restorative practices is kind of an easy way to build community. Um, it's an easy way to build relationships with students. And so even before we roll out the curriculum, staff need to be trained on those things. Staff need to be retrained on P B I S to make sure that classroom expectations are very clear. They need to, um, engage students, though, in choosing what those classroom expectations is. It can't be the teacher saying, you can't do this, this, and this. It's about getting your students', um, voice and what they want their classroom environment to be. And so all of that is part of our strategic plan, and it's a lot of moving pieces at once. Um, but I think our staff is, is competent enough, and I think that they, they want it enough, um, that we can train them on it, and then they can start to put that into practice first day of school.
So timeline, do you see this happening, say, within, uh, let's say you're, you're doing this within the first year, te, uh, training in S E L. Do you see then, uh, maybe a three-month lag before a plan comes forward for interventions and for staffing that, to address the, some of those, um, academic pieces? Or is that something that we'll wait for a full cycle for a year, or what is the plan?
It's, it's, it's ongoing. It, it's, it's, it's going to, um, as we adopt, you know, we, we've been trying to culture and climate for, culture and climate for a while, getting that in, in place, and, and it has progressed over time. I mean, now we're piloting the S E L curriculum, and we're not, it's not waiting for kind of this magical moment. It's, it's, but it's gonna take, it's, it is gonna take time. It is, uh, right now, we have a, a multi-year implementation plan, but we know- It is, right now, we have a multi-year implementation plan, but we know that from a quote-unquote, let's say, day one, that we we have to begin to put these in place so it impacts the basically the, you know, the academic side, you know, of the house. It has to.
I think he's asking a different question.
Say, go ahead.
And so when, and and please, Dr. Flores, if I'm not hearing it correctly, correct me. With the timeline, how I've understood this process to be is setting goals around, let's say, School X has a number of suspensions based around last year's data, and so their goal may be to decrease because they're looking at their data, looking at to say, we're going to decrease our suspensions by 50%. And then kind of some of those components around setting culture and climate, having kind of the first 90 days of school, what that looks like. And then each quarter or whatever that cycle is to look to see how are they tracking it from a very quantitative perspective to say, you know, based around our goals, where are we, where do we need to make some adjustments? I think that's kind of what you're asking for around a timeline. And then specifically around, with some of these particular strategies, it's from my perspective, it's ongoing. It's not something that, okay, now we're going to teach sense of belonging and then we don't do anything with it. It's a feeling that you have that you continually do. And then talking about sense of belonging, looks like, feels like, sounds like in a school classroom, and then having some both anecdotal and qualitative measures to see, are we hitting those based around what the students are experiencing it? And then also looking at it from a very quantitative lens of, have we reduced suspensions? Have we increased attendance, positive attendance, or whatever those metrics are that we've decided as a school entity? Is that kind of what you're asking?
It helps. I guess I was trying to to see whether we have a focus on and an articulated plan to increase our interventions and our academic layer, as you described, to to correspond or correlate with our current effort in SEO or our new effort in in SEO.
I think you want to use, each school would have to look at their data to say, if this is, if we're one of these schools, then what are our scholars saying? And each school has their own individual data and then set goals around that. And so we, you know, and it'll, it won't be as cleanly as I just described it. It'll be something that has to be a moving target because, again, picking out strategies, we want to make sure that they're adjustable and malleable to the current condition versus saying, this is what we're going to do, and then kind of work it to to death in seeing that it may not have results. We want to make sure that if it doesn't have the results that we're expecting, that we're adjusting to a different strategy.
Now, may I ask, have we been able to find more social workers and school psychologists and so on that might be able to support?
Great transition. There you go. And so the answer is yes. And so what we're up to for this next school year, every school will be supported in some type of way. And so we couldn't say that last year or or any year, any year prior to this, in the sense that we've combined efforts around the mental health therapists, and we have different funding sources, but that isn't a matter at this point right now. You know, Cherry Cherry Health Therapists and KSSN, between kind of those three bullets you see right there, every school in in GRPS would be supported through mental health support, you know, through through an adult. Sometimes it may look like they may have one day or a day and a half of support at a building level, but, you know, just a phone call away, other ones going to have, could be three, four days or or full-time support. So it may look a little bit different at each school, but at least this is the first time we can say we will have full support, and we'll have support at each, at each and every building. We think it's important, too, what we're beginning to, we're in the early stages of of working on this right now, is scholar voice is really important. So we, a couple of us went to the superintendent's student advisory, scholar advisory council this past school year. And one thing they said is, you know, they knew we were coming up with a District Mental Health Awareness Day. They said, can we have one for ourselves, but don't not canceling school? We still want to come to school, but topics that we want to talk around, supports we we want to do, can we, can you organize that? But we can, but we set the kind of, kind of what it looks like. And so we're targeting somehow this fall, if you think of like the African American Male Conference, or if you think of something like that structured, we're starting at the high school level, and we know we just try it there, listen, listen to scholars. And it's going to be around, you know, probably some of the competencies, because a lot of things fit in there, but really supports around that, because that's what they're asked for.
And then this past May, we didn't have a ton of time to pull off a conference. For those of you who've been to our Senior Field Day or our Senior Summit in November, it's huge, and that's just with seniors. And so is is we, it's going to take a lot of planning and and collaboration to pull off doing one for for every level. But I think it's necessary because our scholars did ask for it, and they asked for very specific topics. And so we need to honor that and and give that to them. So one of the things that we did this May on a small level, we reached out to the mental health practitioners of color of the City of Grand Rapids and talked to their president. And what we found out was that they have approximately 50 members who practice mental health therapy in the City of Grand Rapids. They have about 35 who are active right now. And so we have been engaging with them for the last couple of months to talk about what does a partnership look like. We we talked about perhaps providing sessions for our students and our families who are uninsured or underinsured. And what does that look like if we pay for up to five sessions for students or for families? We talked about then pushing into buildings to do small groups for those students that need that Tier Two and Tier Three support. So how do we leverage our community partners, folks who are out there doing this work, to push into our buildings and help our help our families and our students? This May, we had, in three buildings, therapists come and read books to our students, and they talked about SEO competencies, about, you know, it's okay to have big feelings and how do you cool off? And so they read to first graders. And then the Grand Rapids Public Library actually donated books to all of those kids in the class. And it was a, it was a great event. The kids loved it. And to go back to an earlier point, some of these things are already happening. So you have teachers who are reading books to students and, well, how do you think this character felt? That is an SEO type of question, you know what I mean? And so some of our teachers and our staff are doing these things already. I think part of it is us naming it and then supporting it and making sure that it's systematic. So they did that for, they did that for us in May. And they also went to UPREP to talk to their National Honor Society about getting more people into the profession of mental health. And so we're connecting them with UPREP and that National Honor Society so they can, one of their capstone projects is to come up with something that they can do for their peers around mental health. And so that group is working with UPREP as well. Southwest, Southwest Community Campus, the new name, the High School.
Middle High.
No, it's the, the long name. The Lingua. Yes. They are partnering with Michigan State University. Michigan State received a grant from Steelcase on mental health first aid. And so every 10th grader at Southwest will receive training on mental health first aid, which will allow them to sort of recognize the signs in themselves that they are struggling, but also recognize signs in their peers, and then what to do with that. So every 10th grader at Southwest will go through that training. We also talked to the Native American Council, and we met with them, and we talked about how that trauma looks very different than everybody else's trauma. And so I've been in contact with a licensed social worker who is going to sort of become part of this pot of people that we can utilize to assist our students and our families. And so next year, we will be busy. The the thing that we're just trying to figure out, I'm waiting for the mental health practitioners of color to tell me if they want us to contract with them as a sort of collaborative, or they want to do it by each individual therapist. But once they decide that, I think it's a full go. And I think we have Ezra funds to to take care of those sessions for our our families who don't have access to it because they are underinsured or uninsured, because I think that's a huge component that we might be missing.
I can just say, you know, Network 180 is another, I mean, they're a county agency, and and they teach mental health first aid for free.
Yep.
And and they have serobilingual as well as, you know, therapists that you could utilize essentially free.
Yep. So Network 180 is one of the organizations that worked with us during the month of May, and they held three parent events or family events about sort of talking about, talking to your student about tough feelings, anxiety, depression. So they partnered with us during the month of May for our Mental Health Awareness Month. So we will definitely be contacting and being in touch with all of our agencies. What we didn't want to run into was a situation where families were going to an agency and they were told either the list is too long or you you don't have the right insurance or Medicaid or whatever it is. We heard back from some families that they were getting bounced out of or pushed back and they couldn't get into to receive those services. And so we felt like it was important for us to engage with people who provide direct services, so maybe we don't, we can skip that line. We can go directly to therapists who are practicing and say, you know, we need three to five sessions for this student or for this family. So I think it's going to be a both and. Oh.
Last thing.
Yeah. A few other things that we we were going to do. So in our student handbook, of course, is being completely redone because, again, the student council, they said they hated it. And so we are going to turn it into more of a resource.
He is such a strong word. Speaking of big feelings.
They they didn't like it very much.
No.
And they didn't actually feel like it was a handbook. They thought it was basically a rulebook of stuff they couldn't do. And and they had valid points there. And so we are rearranging it, rewriting it, but in the beginning, will it will be a resource guide for parents and for students, places they can go, numbers they can call, a couple of things that just came out, the 988 number for mental health emergencies. So all of these things will be included. Our staff, our support staff will be going through mental health first aid. And I think we had a grant through Kent County Health Prevention to provide mental health first aid to staff, so our staff can recognize signs and help students and sort of tell them where to go if they need help. And then the other thing that we we talked about that I think that a lot of us miss is adolescent brain development. Our student, what does their brain look like at during middle school? Why are we seeing this type of behavior? I think that if we understand the brain a little more, we can understand behavior. I think there's a a great connection between those two. And so that's, those are the things that our support staff will be trained on this year, because I think it helps provide a more cohesive picture so you can understand students and understand student behavior, and therefore you can address it. If you don't understand what's happening in the brain or in the body, it's going to be hard to address the behavior.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any closing questions for Ms. Neale?
Thank you so much. So excited about everything.
Very impressive.
I don't necessarily have a question, but maybe just a comment, probably not to dig into it too much now, but when we talk about, you know, building climate and culture, I think it's impressive the direction we're going as far as supports for students. But just as a district, we obviously don't want to lose the value of support for the school-based staff. You know, obviously, we talk about culture and climate. We can have a variety of resources for students, but if our staff don't feel similarly connected or supported and things of that nature, then, you know, that obviously just is a plan without a lot of real traction. So again, that's not a conversation for right now, but just didn't want us to lose that point. Dr. Roby.
Actually, that's a nice segue because one of the the next person who is coming forward is Mr. Harmson, and he's actually going to be talking about, thank you both, about professional learning. So to that point, we want to make sure that everybody understands our base customer, so to speak, are our scholars and then everyone else, they they may be stakeholders or or but we are all supporting the experience that our scholars have. And we are really trying to be very in tune to make sure that building Grand Rapids as one of those school communities that is the place to be is including the professional learning experiences of the adults, not just our teaching staff, but our support staff who are often having different relationships with our young scholars, and then our administrators as well. And so Mr. Harmson will kind of talk about what the plan is and how this aligns to the work that Mel just, Mel and Natasha just spoke on, and then also where it fits into our strategic plan. So take it away.
Well, thank you, Dr. Roby. Good evening, President Ross and distinguished board members. It is my pleasure to talk tonight about professional learning. I'll be giving an overview of professional learning this year and where we're going in the future. Also include some connections to our evaluation process and then also to our strategic plan. When I took over the Professional Learning Department in 2019-20, one of the things I challenged our team and talked to our team about is that we need to get away from compliance. So we had 30 hours by state law that teachers had to take, other staff members not so much, but the the expectation was 30 hours. And that's what it was about. It was about compliance. And I talked about how we will evaluate our program is by our staff's feet. And what I meant by that was they'll walk to our professional learnings or they'll walk away from our professional learnings. So we've worked really hard in the middle of that, of course. In March of 2020, we had a pandemic. And one of the things that the team had done is already started the shift towards virtual and online learning. So I think Grand Rapids was really well situated to react very quickly to that and was able to do COVID training and then also professional learning on our online instructional model. So so it's kind of nice to be back and I don't know if it's a normal year, but kind of talk about, okay, we've had staff and scholars in school all all year and where we, what we've done and where we're going. So some highlights from 21, 22, when it was Educational Impact On-Demand PD, so there's some Danielson components, there's some SEO components, I'll go, I'll go in a little bit. Equity and inclusion, that's really been a strong focus. One of the things that we wanted to do is making sure that all staff were together. So all staff in a building, food and nutrition, parapros, childcare workers, principals, teachers, everyone experienced that together. And then in departments, too. So in central office, we had departments together, too. It resulted, our work, professional learning with Cabinet and with Principals resulted in the Vision for Excellence. We have expanded role group professional development, again, Cabinet BOE, staff voice surveys, meeting with bargaining groups, union surveys, our leadership and principal retreats. So I often get a question from folks during the summer, especially this summer, my best friend who's a teacher, hey, let's go play golf. And I say, I don't have time, is because we've really expanded our our offerings in the summer. It used to be no July PD. I'm like, well, why is that a thing? Because that's when people, I know that's when, when I was a teacher or as a principal, I might be on vacation, but at other times, that's the time I'm actually going to have time to really focus on learning. So peer-led professional development, leading the GRPS way with central office staff. So our leaders were not just principals, but there's also central office staff, and we had teacher leaders attend that, too. We have literacy coaches, our new staff orientation, mentor, new teacher PD, school safety academy, spring and fall instructional technology curriculum conferences. So professional learning and evaluation for building administrators. So one of the things that we did this summer is we had a two-day principal and leadership retreat, and that was for principals, administrators, supervisors, and executive directors and teachers were also there. So again, expanding what the role of of and the vision of what leaders are. And it was a just a fantastic two days. We gave a lot of time for the ILT teams and the building leaders to work to We gave a lot of time for, uh, the ILT teams and the building leaders to work together, uh, and, um, did a lot around needs assessments and talking about, one of the things they looked at was panorama and doing a deep dive into panorama. And we're having another one in August, uh, again, to, uh, help us, um, uh, move forward for this year. So one of the great things about, um, what we're doing and, and administrator evaluation is that through the Promise Neighborhood and through other initiatives we've had, um, the Hill, um, Hill Group has been working in Grand Rapids Public Schools, so that's high-impact leadership. And, uh, those Promise Neighborhood Schools and schools that were working with Hill in the past had what was called a cycle of renewal. So this year, we're, um, aligning, uh, not only those Hill Schools, but all of our schools with the same cycle of renewal because we looked at it and it's a really fantastic model of, uh, school improvement, uh, based around a strength model rather than a deficit model. And our school advanced building leader rubric, which we use for principal evaluation and building leader evaluation, we've used it for, uh, several years now and is, uh, state-approved. Dr. Pat Reeves, who's our person from the Promise Neighborhood and the Hill Cycle of Renewal, uh, is one of the co-authors of that. So obviously, there's a very strong connection between those. So if this is the things that we say are high, uh, these are the strategies and the behaviors of our principals and building leaders, then we need to make sure that we're doing professional development to support those. So that's what we're using with Dr. Pat Reeves. Actually, I had a session with her this morning with, uh, our academic team, uh, which is some executive directors, uh, who are on the academic side and some other folks. And, uh, so we're also learning, uh, as lo- as well as, as our principals. So, uh, professional learning and evaluation for teachers. Uh, so we offer on-demand differentiated online videos and modules, support implementation of the Charlotte Danielson Framework through Educational Impact. So, um, I'm still overseeing evaluation, but one of the thing I always did is made sure I got feedback from, uh, from stakeholders, so principals, teachers about, um, and with, uh, Mary and the, uh, GRIA, uh, union leadership around what's working, what's not working. And one of the things was always, well, if we have a teacher who's struggling or just a teacher who wants to learn more about one of the components, uh, trying to do that in person is pretty difficult to do. You can only do it at certain times, certain days. Uh, so we did some research and found this educational impact and then it has, uh, um, Dr. Danielson has some, uh, some videos where if I'm, uh, wanna learn more about component three A, I can click on a video and I can watch, uh, I, I would watch Dr., um, Danielson, uh, uh, talk about it, but it also gives some, uh, you can also go as deep as taking a whole course on two A. So here's building respect and rapport. There's an overview, there's some reading, there's some videos, and at the end of the time, there's a quiz, and if you pass that quiz, uh, you get a little, uh, um, attaboy for, uh, for passing two A, building respect and rapport with students. And then we're actually, uh, working this year on, one of our initiatives is a, a system where there's, it's called Badger, where you actually get a certificate, uh, saying that, uh, you've done this work. Professional learning and evaluation for new teachers. So we have our new teacher academy, uh, Tina Watson, our director of professional learning, who was our induction coordinator before, is, uh, really, uh, just an amazing person and, uh, does amazing work, and her new teacher academy has, has been her baby. And, uh, it's a, it's a state-recognized, uh, uh, new induction program. Her and I went and, um, presented to MASPA, uh, a couple of years ago around, uh, what we, all the new things we did for teachers. And I was thinking about this, uh, you know, as overseeing evaluation, I see all of the teacher evaluation, eration, evaluation rankings. Uh, and, uh, we tell the new teacher, especially the new, the ones brand-new to the profession, that we really expect you to be minimally effective your first almost two years. And a lot of times, especially in the first year, our new, brand-new teachers are minimally effective, but I think it's a testament to Tina's work and her design and all our facilitators that by the second and third year, we have very few, uh, probationary teachers who are minimally effective. And as you can say, see, they're all directly designed around a Danielson component. So NTA one oh one, uh, actually one oh two managing classroom procedures, that is one of the components in the Danielson rubric. So a very strong alignment there. Stakeholder voice. So the number, the, the, the biggest lever for professional development is the closer we get to the classroom. And then the second is the principal, and then the third is what we do here at central office. So with that mind, in mind, we also want to talk and get the input from those closest to the work, right? That only makes sense. We ask our teachers to do that with our scholars. We wanna do the same thing and be a model of that as a professional learning department. So, uh, we do induction program surveys of new teachers and mentors and principals, how that program's going, what can we do to change, uh, what's going great, um, and we need to continue to do more of. We have instructional technology curriculum conferences, ITCCs, so those are all online. Those are twice a year. We do district-wide surveys on topics. So that's not just to teachers, that's to all groups. Where, what, what, what are some, uh, things that you wanna learn more about? And that is, uh, we do it conference-style, it's virtual. We have, uh, I can't remember the name of the program, but it has a lobby and you sit in the lobby and then you say, I wanna go to this, uh, I wanna go to this session and then, or I wanna go to this session, uh, and we do those a couple of times a year. Me with role groups to co-plan professional learning. So our Grayson childcare workers, uh, Tina and I sat down with the leadership, the union leadership with that, and we co-planned, uh, professional learning. So we talked about what are the needs? Uh, they, uh, went out, uh, actually we did it with Grayop and parent professionals too. They went out and talked to their, uh, their folks and said, this is what we're hearing, this is what, uh, they need, uh, and we co-planned. So some of the things, like I facilitated some, uh, we had other folks facilitate, we had some of our secretaries facilitate, we had, uh, one, well, I'll talk about that later, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, uh, stakeholder voice is really important. Stakeholder facilitators, so, uh, principals, department supervisor, building leader, central office staff, non-instructional staff, and again, Grayson, Grayop, GRESPA. And I do a professionalism and a customer service. Uh, sometimes I do those separately or I do them together. And, uh, the Grayop secretary said, you know what, I've gone through this, uh, two times with you, I think I know it really well. I think I would like to facilitate this, uh, and, uh, put more of a, uh, of a secretary spin on it. Though I am more qualified to do it now because one of the, uh, you know, as we all subbed and helped out in buildings, I was a sub-secretary. Nobody trained me on how to open the door, you know? When it starts dinging and there's like five buttons on how you get that to automatically open. So, uh, um, so we really wanna make sure, again, because it also provides more, um, I think it's more, um, it's taken better when it's from somebody who's actually done the work. And this can be more effective because the person can say, well, that person is definitely an expert because they've done the work, right? Um, so that's another really, uh, positive of making sure that we have stakeholder facilitators. Here's some more information around our stakeholder, uh, uh, facilitators at ITT Conference Facilitators. Um, this is really the, uh, uh, the brainchild in the work of Aaron Gotra and Mike Hastings, who are instructional, uh, tech supervisors along with the curriculum department and the professional learning department. And again, this shows some of the different, um, uh, sessions we had. There's a Grayop FAQ that was done by a, a secretary in central strategies for English learners, that was, you know, Kay Smith, she does a lot of the supportive EL. Uh, non-pro nouns, adjectives temporarily disconnected, uh, Malika Brown did that, social emotional learning, Rondo Cooper. It's funny, I didn't pick these out and people are in the, they're all, most of the people are doing, doing these, they're here, it just happened to be there. Um, so just, uh, different, uh, folks did those facilitations. Again, those topics, some of them, we just thought those would be interesting topics, but many of those topics were actually specifically asked for by, uh, by folks. Uh, so social emotional learning and, uh, Mel and his department went through a, a deep, uh, dive into that. Uh, but one of the things that we also had on, and impact was, uh, social emotional learning SEL, um, on-demand videos. So if I wanted to learn more, I could do that on. Again, being differentiated, it doesn't hurt to have it from several perspectives. Uh, Rondo, who's here again, also did some, uh, online modules, um, and I'm sure there's other folks who did too. Uh, so there's GRPS developed and also on-demand. So, uh, that's one of the things we focused on when we use, uh, when we look at ESSER money was buying software and Title I money, buying software to be able to differentiate our, um, our PD.
What's the, who do you use for the social emotional on-demand videos or?
So it's, it's called edu- educational impact is the site, and then I, I had, uh, the SEL department, I said, I'm not, I'm not comfortable putting these out into, unless you guys look at it and tell me this is vetted and this is, uh, good work. So what I did is I, I, I gave it to that, uh, to that department and they looked it over and said, yeah, this is, this is good stuff. So the other thing that we really are focusing on is not just sit and get. So it's, you have to get the, get to know, you need to get the knowledge and the understanding, but also giving opportunity. It could, uh, just like scholars, adults learn best when they can, uh, talk to each other about their learning, make meaning of their learning and collaborate. So, uh, one of the things that I always talk about is how time is such an important, uh, resource for our, our staff and our teachers, and, uh, we owe it to them to give them the time to be able to collaborate and work together. So not just, okay, here's the knowledge, here's the information, here's the strategy, go work on in your free time, right? No, we wanted to make sure that folks had time in our sessions to collaborate and then provide additional, uh, funding, uh, to, to work and collaborate outside of, um, outside of work time. So here's some examples of that. I believe that's Dr. Roby who, uh, was, uh, working on a session. Again, so several, uh, you know, cabinet, teachers, central office, uh, teachers, principals all working together. Those two posters are from, uh, the principal retreat that we had, Ottawa Hills and Mulock Park. I think they, uh, my team who put this together, I think that we picked those on purpose because I am, of course, a Mulock Park and Ottawa Hills proud alumni. So, uh, uh, and then, uh, the top is Dr. Campbell facilitating one of our leading the GRPS ways, which was focused on equity. And then actually also, uh, later in the year, we, we, uh, we, uh, started talking about sense of belonging. So, uh, sharing strategies and ideas on how to improve sense of belonging in all our schools. So expanded PL choice and opportunities, Summer Learning Academies, Culture Responsive School Leadership Institute, uh, early literacy cohort, on-demand videos, ITC conferences, virtual and in-person. So when you look at, um, at SEL and a sense of belonging, one of the strategies that you could use is make sure you have a culturally responsive school. And, uh, and I know earlier it was brought up about, um, you know, what are we doing? And I think one of the things that we've, we've started to do is kind of flip how we determine what professional learning is. Cause it used to be, we would look at that, right? Twenty-nine percent sense of belonging, we can all agree that that's not where we want it to be. But maybe what we've done in the past is say, okay, we need to do a district-wide PBIS initiative, or we need to, and, and do professional learning about it. But what we have done is, is flipped the script. So we have our, our, uh, ILT teams and our principals looking at the data and saying, oh yeah, sense of belonging is really a problem here, right? Something we really need to work on. What, what is working? What can we do to build on that strength? But what do we need to do? What is the target strategy? So, uh, and then it's our job as a professional development part, department to provide support in those areas. So here's some strategies that we know are high-yield. So here's what we're gonna support and do professional development about. And it, it's much more likely to be effective if those strategies work, if they're targeted actually what's going on at that school. So school A may need this, school B may need this. But also it gives the opportunity, when we build out the collaboration, for, uh, school A and B to talk and say, well, this is what we do at school A, that's working really well. Maybe school B, you can try that. Or executive directors oversee buildings, say, you know what, I see this in our data. As the principals talk and decide, I see this in our data that we all need to work on this. So that's gonna be really a focus for us this year. So looking forward to twenty-two, twenty-three, connection of professional learning to strategic plan, uh, district priority outcomes. So reduce academic disparities for Black and Latino scholars, reduce Black scholar's exclusionary discipline, increase scholar empowerment, belonging and agency, increase successful transitions from high school to college or career and leading GRPS way, culture responsive school leadership institutes. Those are all focused on those. So those are the priority outcomes, that's where our focus areas are gonna be around. Math literacy, literacy and, uh, holistic child needs. So again, when we do that, we become very much more to- targeted and focused. And then the other thing that we flipped is that we had all central office folks at, uh, at the, the principal retreat, they weren't necessarily presenting, what they were doing is providing support. So they were going from group to group. Uh, we had the cohorts of schools in different rooms and they would say, they would have questions about panorama, they may have questions about other data, they may have, start talking about, uh, strategies, and we have the folks who can. And it really focuses our work too, and our resources and, and, um, is gonna provide a much more consistency across the district. So here are some of the, uh, areas that we're looking forward to, safety and security, SEL, trauma-informed aspiring leaders, three sixty assessments, learning academies, early literacy cohort, early literacy coaches. So again, it goes back to what's the number one lever that is right in the classroom, improving the teacher's practice. So we have some, uh, early literacy coaches, uh, that we have. We have through the Hill Grant, we have some coaches who are, uh, gonna be, uh, providing support not only for those Promise Neighborhood Schools, but all schools. Again, we're doing principal retreats and, uh, culturally responsive leadership. And leveraging Title II and ESSER funds, so stipends for teachers and actually also administrators who are not, uh, who are not on contract. Uh, so again, they can provide professional learning in the summer. I know when I was a teacher, I'd have a summer job to kind of, uh, fill in the gaps. So here's a way that we can, uh, we can reduce that barrier, is that we can pay folks and it's just the right thing to do. If somebody's gonna do work, they need to be paid. So not only to attend professional learning, but we also have provided, uh, stipends to do collaboration outside of, uh, professional, you know, sessions. So we have summer institutes, Culture Responsive School Leadership Institute that, um, Malika just, uh, Brown just did a fantastic job, uh, setting up. And then, um, and, and that group with, uh, that work with Dr. Khalifa is just, uh, nationally renowned. And our relationship and, uh, with Dr. Khalifa and, uh, our reputation of being able to do this work allowed us to, to, uh, host that, uh, last week, but also allowed them to say, uh, I know because it was the summer, there were some, some folks who couldn't make it who really need to be here, so how can we assist in getting, uh, as many people trained as possible? So they have, uh, one coming through the MDE next week and they let, uh, have twenty-four free slots for us. I don't know if we can fill it because it's kind of a last second, but we also have started talking about how are we gonna continue this? So, uh, you know, we use Title II and ESSER funds, the on-demand videos and some of the other software, uh, Dr. Campbell, all her consultation and work, uh, we, we were paying from Title II and ESSER funds. And then I talked, you know, when I started talking, I talked about compliance. So, um, I think we, I think the team was up to that challenge. As you look at, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had seven hundred and thirty-one courses offered, twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-four PD courses taken. And just a reminder, we have an estimate, I always estimate about a hundred teachers, just over, I believe, two thousand, how many?
Let me hear here, how many, how many employees do we have?
About two thousand, about two thousand. So forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two sketch credits were awarded. So that's, uh, each credit is awarded for an hour and that's, sketch is the only folks who really need to use the sketch and who get sketch are, uh, academic folks like teachers and principals, some of us, some of us in central office who have academic jobs. Ninety-six district staff facilitators, a hundred and fifty-five mentors assigned this year. There's, uh, actually two hundred and fifty-five total mentors. Seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-six new teacher hours completed, and that's about three hundred, so you start doing the math, that's about fifty new teacher hours. Seven hundred and fifty-one staff complete above and beyond hours. So that's seven hundred and fifty-one about, of about eight hundred and seventy teachers who had to complete above and beyond, uh, who, who are evaluated and probably have around a hundred who didn't, weren't evaluated this year because they're three-year highly effective. So that's, that's a very high number. And then six hundred, eight hundred, six thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven hours above and beyond were completed. So when I started this off, I talked about how we really went from compliance in those thirty hours. When you do the math of, um, how many sketch credits, depending on how many, probably about eleven hundred, uh, folks who actually have to earn scratch, sketch credits, on average, were around forty-one hours of PD folks are taking every year. So I think that team really stepped up and, uh, moved us from compliance to, uh, to many more hours. And I think one of the reasons why, again, is because we made it much easier, uh, by differentiating, uh, how they can take those, uh, how they, how we can take those, uh, how they can take those, um, sessions. We asked them what they wanted so that they're more likely to take those. And we made it easier to take it. And we made it easier to take it. And we also paid for them. So that's what I have. Any questions?
Doesn't look like, I guess you did a great enough job or no need for questions. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just really, just an amazing team that we have between the Fine Arts and Shared Time Program, the Curriculum Department, the Professional Learning and the Equity Inclusion. It's just a, it's a great team to be, be a part of and to lead. So they make the, the job and the work easier.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the folks who contributed to this as well, for sure.
I'm just wondering, given what you said, is, is it making us GRPS a place where, you know, teachers really want to go because they're hearing, wow, you're getting, I'm getting this kind of training, I'm, I'm learning these kinds of things? What are you hearing in the street?
So I, I, I'm not sure what I'm hearing in the street, but I know when I go and, when I go in to recruit at job fairs and the, the first question I get is, what do you do? How do you support us? How do you support me? And then, you know, I can go into our new induction program and people are just blown away. And that's a testament to your commitment to that program because it's, there's quite a large financial commitment. I don't know anybody who pays their mentors as much as we, we pay our mentors. And, you know, we've, we've, you show what's important by what resources you put in and we put a lot of resources in that, in that, into that between training mentors and having, again, I'm, it's the only program I know of that there are mentor qualifications, just you can't, I remember when I was a teacher, the mentor qualification is that you're willing to do it and you're willing to be paid at the end. And there was nothing, nothing that happened in between, no training. Whereas here, we train all our mentors to be eligible to be paid and we have a higher level that Tina has provided where you can be a, what's it called? Is it a math? It's not a math. A lead mentor. And they can actually get even a higher compensation because they went through a more rigorous mentor training. So there's that. And then, you know, I can just tell that, well, we have, you know, we have these, these trainings for you, they're directly around the Danielson components, which are going to be evaluated on it. We give you some, a mentor, we pay your mentor well. We're a larger district, so we have additional resources. So that's, that's the, and I know we use it in our marketing tools that this is a...
You, you went through the numbers very, very rapidly and I'm sorry, I didn't mentally grab that number, but you indicated how many teachers were, I think, highly effective or effective?
That was like, that's a, don't hold me to that, it's a kind of a guesstimate.
Oh, it's kind of a guesstimate.
Yeah, I do, I'm, we're just finishing that, so I can have that. And I know you guys like to have that number.
And it was out of 2,000 or so?
About 1,000.
About 1,000 teachers?
Yeah.
Okay. And then most of it is, is based on the, on the modules that are based on Charlotte Danielson rubric and her, her teachings, which are valuable. Have you seen any direct correlation in the outcomes academically for our district that have, have prevailed because of that alignment to Charlotte Danielson and those particular modules for instruction?
So it's so new, it's difficult to say and just where we're coming from. It's, it's, it's hard to put any, it's hard to decide, okay, what is causing this improvement in our data because of, you know, where we've been with COVID and where we're at. So that's another thing I think we're all really looking forward to is, is back at, we, we can, all those things that were, we weren't sure about because we were, were we in school or we were hybrid? Now we have more control over those things and we can say, okay, this is what's working or not working.
And then another question, have we gauged or surveyed the staff to see what impact those particular modules have had on their teaching? Or is there, are there any plans to do so, so that we're, again, looking for teacher voice in this whole process and evaluating just what our efforts have, have gained in terms of outcomes?
So, so we can definitely do some work on that to gain that information because, you know, I can come up here and speculate and say, yeah, I think it's having an impact, but you only know when you start looking at the data.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Often with evaluations, it is important to get that feedback. And one of the things that the professional learning team has done, they ask for survey data and then where we are moving in the future, kind of aligned to creating a more impactful workforce, which is one of our outcomes for our district, is to have that real-time, what do people want? And so what we're developing in this next year are what we're calling learning academies, where people are able to specifically design things that they're more interested in learning about. Because typically if you are interested in, in learning more about a particular subject or content area, then you're going to be more likely to apply it. And so we want to move, as Eric said, beyond compliance. And I think they've done a really nice job as a testament by the number of staff members who have gone above and beyond what's required for that continual development and really treating our staff as the professionals that they are, that we are providing time and also compensating them for their time to get better at their practice. And I think that's really, really important.
And I think, you know, you're, Dr. Flores, your question was directly around evaluation and, you know, we've really always been willing to get feedback. Couple of years ago, Steve Petros and I were in a program and our project was to do some really deep diving into the evaluation. We did focus groups and talked to different groups on it. And I think it's, it's time again to do that kind of work. Again, where we're getting back to, because we've, the focus in evaluation the last three years has been trying to make the best of what we can. We've made a lot of adjustments, we've reduced the number of observations, we've done some things with student growth, the best that we could do based on it. So I think we're kind of, again, hopefully, we're not jinxing it, so we can get back at saying, okay, here, we kind of are back to a normal type of business. So then we can start looking at the evaluation process. And again, stakeholder feedback is so important because, just like I talked about professional learning is about compliance, the evaluation system is a really lot about compliance because of the state law. But where there's opportunity to make it more than just about compliance, we want to do that. And I think there's, I think there's some room and opportunity to do that as we continue to learn more and then as, as the data nationwide is coming out around, we've had, I think, 11 or 12 years now of this high stakes evaluation system and is it really improving outcomes? And then what, what parts of evaluation systems are improving outcomes and what aren't?
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Harmsen. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Well, that moves us to our action items for this evening. The first of which is the Grand Rapids Education Office Association contract. I believe this is pretty much just a financial re-opener. So I don't know if there are any questions or anything anyone needs in regards to it. If not, can I get a motion to approve the GREO contract?
No mood.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis? Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President?
Yes. Then our next action item is tonight's purchasing agenda, which was in your packet. If you don't have any questions or comments on that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. And our last action item, I see we have a nomination to add to the Child Discovery Center Board of Directors. There was information in the packet about that. Mr. Bear doesn't look like he's available. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments on that.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Support. It looked like a very appropriate, very appropriate point.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And then last, the, the consent agenda grouping. Have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
Motion to support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. Well, I mean, discussion items, I guess I just want to thank folks for participation in last week's retreat and particularly to Ms. Shaki for her leadership in this regard. And the ADHOC facilities team will be following up, unpacking some of that information this Wednesday. Yep. So again, that work is moving forward and thanks everyone for that. Otherwise, I guess that just moves us to public comment for non-agenda items. Don't believe we have any. Okay, so that moves us to superintendent's comments.
Actually, I don't have any. I think I've talked quite a bit today.
All right. Well, board comments, I'll start with you, Dr. Baker.
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
You know, I was very pleased with the information that was presented and in particular that related to evaluation where I raised the question, you know, having been a teacher for many years in the district and, and participating in the evaluation process, I, I think that it has to be all-inclusive. It seemed to be somewhat focused, highly focused on the Daniel Rubinson, Daniel, Danielson, sorry, Charlotte Danielson rubric and, and that whole process. I think good teaching needs to be reflective. We need to, it needs to be collaborative. It, it needs to have input and value that is demonstrated, not only to our, our scholars, but also to other teachers. And, and I think that, you know, it is an art as well as a science. And if you're a really good teacher, you ought to be evaluated by other really good teachers, if not better teachers. And I think that those are the, the kinds of bedrocks that we need to have, that we look at in an evaluation system. It shouldn't be just a checklist. You know, I mean, I dread being a doctor or a lawyer or another professional, even a tradesman, and have someone come in with a little checklist and, and say, you, you have to master this model and this particular framework or rubric in order to be qualified as, as highly effective in your, in your craft or your profession. And I think we need to look beyond that because I think our students deserve more. I think the outcomes, I mean, if it was that effective for as long as we've been doing it, then our, our scholars should be, you know, 100% highly effective and they should be feeling that and personal efficacy in the classroom. And I think the data does not support that. So I would say, while I respect all of the work that's been done and I know there's been a heavy lift, I really think we ought to look at that going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Shaki?
No comment.
Reverend Matthias?
Yeah, I, I am pleased to see the, the social emotional moving along. I, I wish that it was more because I think we've had an enormous amount of data that we have been able to both collect and sift through. And we're still piloting, you know, potentially aid and so forth. So, but I am very hopeful that we, that we reach a place where our, our kids certainly feel safe, our teachers feel supported, and certainly our parents feel like we're, like we're partnering with them and not doing it for them. So that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I just want to second what Dr. Flores said about teacher evaluations. Thanks for saying that.
Thank you. And Ms. Grant?
No comment.
And no comment for me, so I'm, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.